Five, today is the eleventh of April twenty twenty four. This is a HASPRA meeting in a call to order. Uh let's see, prior to the opening of the session Devon, Amanda will check soon as Van is working. It is. We are confirming the trustees and TAC members, our staff are meeting. We are. Amanda will start the soon recording. Uh this is a regular board meeting. Uh and Devon, could you take roll call please?
Yes, I'd be happy to. Lumen Drad, Dennis Wosby, and Chair Francisco Zermin.
And I'm here. All right, and then of course, we at the moment do not have any prospective HSP trustees, but we look some staff. Can we have staff introduce themselves, including our special guest? Starting with you.
Yes, please.
Hi, I'm Neil Rosen. I am President of Hardwood.
And I'm Devon Reese, Principal Planner with East Bay Regional Park District.
Eddie Willis, Planner for East Bay Regional Parks.
Brian Moscow, Assistant Director of Development, Capital Development for Hardwood.
Taylor Richard, Associate Planner with this, we're planning.
Eric Pearson, General Services Manager for City of York.
Megan Kullucci, fellow of the city.
Erica Castillo, Regimentarian Public Affairs Director for Alameda County.
Very good. So this is President, President, on, and then we have. Additionally, we don't have any more. So today's meeting is being held in person to the Brown Act, or members and staff are participating in person. The public can participate via phone or conference, conferencing, public comments. Uh they may be submitted one or two ways. Please Devon.
Yes, public can always participate in HASPRA meetings in two ways. One is to send an email to Amanda Sanders, a sanders@eb parks.org by noon on the day of the meeting. Please identify the agenda number and let us know. So the final email, excuse me. And. The second way is live by Zoom, to participate in the Zoom meeting. And to pre-register for Zoom and then raise your hand during either public comments or during the agenda items themselves.
Do we have any public comments, Amanda?
I did not receive any public comments by email. However, we do have some uh public in the uh on the Zoom call. So for each uh thing, if uh if somebody needs to speak, just raise your hand and we will call on you at the appropriate time.
Thank you. I think a representative from supervisors, at least on our guest offices online, listening in. Right. Thank you, Amanda. Mr. President, do you have anything for public comments?
No, I'm glad to be here.
All right, thank you. We have seen no comments. All right. And of course, if you were making public comments, you would have three minutes. Um, uh let's see, uh no emails. So we are going now to item number one. Which is the um approval of the minutes on March twenty first of twenty twenty four. Do you have any comment, public comments on that, Amanda?
I see no raised hands at this point.
You from here?
Little approval.
All right, very good. A second. All right. And no, I see no negatives. So that is approved unanimously. We now go on to what, roll call?
Yes, to a roll call.
Yes.
So that was um motion to approve by uh trustee Wosby, second in line trustee Andrade. Trustee Andrade. We're gonna take a roll call.
Okay, yes.
And trustee Wosby?
Aye.
And Chair Zermin?
Yes.
Okay, pass this in.
We are now in item number two, City of Hayward Project Updates presented by Taylor Richard, Richard.
Um I have nothing to report other than the staff data. So I was thinking, well, updates was supposed to have a work session that tonight's planning mission here. It has been uh to handle my own school. Certain that this morning, I will let the board know that we'll be rescheduled to, we know.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm like the one that some additional act like, like that's our benefit package before they showed it to the decision makers.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Uh I'm sorry, Taylor, just to clarify, you do not have a date certain for that work study session?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Do we have any public comments on this item, Amanda?
Seeing no hands raised.
And I don't see any here. All right. So that means that there really is no motion or action. This is just informative. Uh and we are now on item number three, uh Public Agency and Community Outreach Program Draft. And it's the board on, is there any board comment on this particular draft?
I do have a presentation just for.
Oh, yes, for a second.
A little bit. So this is what we're calling, it's in the packet. We're calling this the uh Public Agency and Community Outreach Draft Program. And the basic premise is that the board and staff want to grow HASPRA and enlarge the Technical Advisory Committee to include any agency or private company with an interest in protecting Hayward Shoreline. So the memo in the packet is the start of a plan to have more public agencies as trustees and more staff as members of the TAC. To keep track of community engagement activities also, such as Earth Day coming up in Hayward on uh April twentieth. We have been in formal discussions with Alameda County. And I saw that Ali Evers from the county CDA is joining us, so I wanted to welcome her specifically. We look forward to working with her and her colleagues in the future from Alameda County. We did also have a number of suggestions that did not make it into today's packet from Jackie Zipkin and Etta. So I just wanted to let her know that we will be adding her suggestions, which included adding Native American tribal representatives to the Technical Advisory. Actually, it's a great idea. Good. So this is the first, board's first opportunity to give staff suggestions that we can bring back. Uh and and staff will bring this back to future meetings until we're ready to have you adopt it. And just one last um point here. This was a successful meeting at the Hard Shoreline Center for Master Plan now five years ago. And just wanted to, you know, have us think that this is going to be a great resource for us as we, you know, promote HASPRA in the future and work closely with Hard, uh future events there. And so with that, I will listen to the board.
Any comments?
So when you say growing the past by, of course, you know, we're within the boundaries of the HASPRA area.
Yes, oh, the question was growing HASPRA within the current boundaries. We do have interest from uh we've heard informal interest from the city of San Landry, which in that case would mean change and amendment to the boundaries. But we have just begun those discussions. It's still premature to talk about it just yet.
Okay.
Oops, okay, yeah.
Excuse me, before you speak, trustee Wosby, could I just ask that everyone speak up just a little bit? Uh it's somewhat hard to hear on the Zoom call. Thank you.
Sure, thank you. Um, yeah, I think this is a great, great, thank you for doing this. As we requested this a lot, I'm glad we're moving forward with this. Uh having started last year with trustees or menus kind booth giving us, and then we got lots of input, lots of fun. We had out there educating folks about Hayward Shoreline. Um so along with that, have we ever considered getting a private entities or uh NGOs? Uh I'm thinking, just, I I don't know how it would work, but we had a presentation, people are together Bay Area. They usually want people to join them, give them money, but maybe they have some interest uh to reciprocate a little bit, maybe, or participate with us. I I'm thinking of, uh, you know, I know, I I might saw this, I I didn't get the the Xs along with the the uh agencies and private companies, the uh I I don't know what the X is meant, for being on the board, the Alameda County Board of Supervisors, that that was meant we contacted them, right?
The idea of table one, which is on page nine of the packet, was to show in one table entities that we were approaching for either participation on the board as a trustee or on the technical advisory committee. So in that case, we do have both. But there are some cases like with um BCDC, for example, we've identified them as potential member of the technical advisory committee. Uh we wouldn't have them on the board because they're, you know, potential regulator or possibly the funder. But um there is a role for private entities, including the Hayward Chamber of Commerce and some of the Village Homeowners Association, the San Landry Village Homeowners Association. Those could be members that we would approach to join the technical advisory committee.
And with, um, has Calpine been approached?
Not recently, but Calpine is on here because the, um, in the private entities, because in the past, the city of Hayward had approached them during the master plan process. So I think we would like to approach Calpine now in twenty twenty four.
I think it's a good idea. I think we're getting big enough now where they could hardly not join us if they're, it's completely fee. Uh when they're right there, I know their plans are right there, but people know that the public, so maybe they would join based on the pressure, must doing the right thing, and they might want to join. Also picking up. I I don't know, I'm just going out there, Sierra Club, uh I don't know what they would offer, but they would offer support and then they are involved. Um, the Alameda Creek Alliance, uh which, you know, does things along Alameda Creek, which isn't Hayward Shoreline, but it's it's close. And and I think more people would get involved. I I don't know, I I everything I'm thinking about is out of the ordinary, because some of our partners, the uh um the folks down there at uh God, kills. Who are those guys? Who are these guys? Zilla Gates, now it's um, yeah, Denver and Corey Associates is what their new name is now. Those guys might want to get into that. I mean, they're doing really good stuff in their area. I I think they're strong enough to know that uh you know, just because they're three miles south of our area, they could, they will have some benefits by our successes or our, even our failures, they'll learn from us. Um, and and what about well, yeah, I mean, the Salt, Salt, they Salt Pond Restoration Authority, uh, they're across the street. Oh, no, we 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 go across this highway ninety two, right? Yeah, so okay, I I think they would be a, uh, should come in also and
I was gonna suggest we go in South, I was gonna say in San Cherry District. That's all right.
That would, that would be great, yeah. And they had a big stake in Hayward Marsh. They discharged. HASPRA. And it removed the whole, the whole field, right? You're looking at the whole presentation, the events, I'm really happy about the events. Were you gonna say anything about the events? Because, um, I mean, you know, uh, and uh, I'm thinking to the Castro Valley Fall Festival. So the help booth.
Can I, can I suggest one more, let's have my mic, one more? You know, I think Ducks Unlimited funded part of that, of course, they probably might want, want to have Duck County rights. What they asked for, but I mean, they're interested in that, in in appetite, you know, and they paid for some of that appetite restoration there, so. And it's not a group, it's, you know, we're in the Bay.
Then what about the San Francisco Bay Trail? I know we've approached them before, they were kind of, but.
I know they've had staffing turnover, but they would definitely want them to be involved. If there's a staff person to be involved, we want.
Okay, good, good, good.
And if not, I can make a suggestion that you could, they're part of MTCA, so you could just have an representative from MTCA.
Good suggestions.
Well, yeah, and then I mean, I I would bet, you know, um, Jen McBride, the Ridge Trail, it's it's, she's, she's of that philosophy, we're all together in trails and space and saying the things and those people, you know, they have connections, they're smart. Maybe not on board, the technical advisory committee, possibly. And then I I really applaud these, these ideas about going out to uh street fairs and library events and things like that and you know, I wouldn't mind uh doing a roadshow, we have a roadshow, or prepare a roadshow, I would like, way out doing it at rotary clubs throughout the, throughout the area. There's a number of roadshows, three or four in Hayward itself alone, and Castro Valley's got one and you know, I think we could do really well down there. This works.
Excellent, thank you. This is exactly the feedback I needed.
I mean, also, I was to say, because we've just been attending the useful advisory committees, we should purchase them, we should hit those, you know, those are real physical, they should know that we exist. Joe, yes?
Yes.
I have a, one more um unappropriate services uh meeting, which is attended by two supervisors, I trust.
Oh, tell them what has. Uh Sierra Club is a very, very good idea. East Bay Mud? No, have we, have we, are we thinking about that thing? There is an East Bay Mud, but.
Oh, yeah, I mean.
Okay, I didn't see them on the list.
But we can certainly add them, please.
Yes, I think that's good. And Caltrans, how about Caltrans?
Uh Caltrans participates actively on the Technical Advisory Committee.
Okay.
Because they're a potential funder, it's not appropriate for them to join the board. But they do have several representatives that attend the technical advisory committee.
Okay, all right. And Eric, I, something really came to my mind. Uh our airport is a separate entity from the city of Hayward, although it is Hayward. Would they, you think they would might be?
It's part of our, it's managed by the city.
Right, so, could they be a different, a different entity, something like this?
Uh, I mean, I'm not sure.
So it's a different enterprise funds, that's what I'm standing.
Um, we can, we can think about that.
Yeah, and I think they're more the merrier. And that was one of the reasons that we may not, I think that we have, there's a few in the fees are fine. Uh the events are excellent. Um, I I will, I think I will have free um, free downtown street fairs, uh booth for you guys. Um, uh Hayward Rotary, that you mentioned, it's good, good idea. We have a rodeo uh at Roto Branch on the seventeenth, eighteenth, nineteenth, maybe one have a rodeo there.
Of May or?
May, May.
Let's take a look.
Uh, see what it, see what it entails. And then also, we, we, the Kansas Community Committee celebrates the USA, the birthday of the United States, and that's, that's on the twenty ninth of June, and that'll be at the Eden Mansion. You're welcome to come over. Feel charged, I won't charge you anything. Some nice stuff. All right, let's see, uh, anything else on this side? Amanda, do we have any public comments on this particular item?
I see no hands raised.
Oh, okay. Anybody else here? All right, so your task is to look for other possibilities.
Well, the other one I would add on that, because I see the Hayward Library, we should put on there, AC Library. Alameda County.
Yes, yeah.
The San Lorenzo Library is a very, very active place.
Very good idea. All right, anything else on this particular item? No, we saw there's, it's not an action item, so there's no uh motion needed, okay, no motion needed. So I'm going to go now to the um uh the item for adoption of these joint power authority agreement. Devon is gonna make a presentation and then we will discuss.
Yes, very pleased to. Wanted to acknowledge that today is the accumulation of such hard work between the board, the staff, our attorneys at Hanson Bridget, and your all attorneys from your agencies. So I really feel like today is a milestone where we have a clean copy of a JPA that can be considered for adoption. And it's really a year in the making, probably a year and a half in the making today. So let me just tell you a few details about it. We have substantially uh accepted the changes that Alameda County Mosquito Abatement presented at the last meeting. And we've considered Oraloma's concerns and addressed them where possible. I see that we're being joined by Nicole Witt from Hanson Bridget. Hi, Nicole, welcome. Um, so we've addressed most of Oraloma's concerns. And we hope that both agencies will vote to join HASPRA in the next few weeks. The advantages of this agreement as drafted are shown on the screen, that it creates a new HASPRA organization that is equipped to meet the challenges of climate change. New members can be recruited once the newly seated agency is up and operating. It allows staff members to be ready to accept grant funds and apply for future grants. It will enable the hiring of a consultant to administer HASPRA. It will position HASPRA to grow its board and the technical advisory committee, like we just talked about. And it allows HASPRA to participate as a sub-regional agency in the upcoming work that BCDC is doing on the regional shoreline adaptation plan. So there is one detail I wanted to share, which was that there was an error, an editing error in the packet. One map got in that was incorrect, one map was correct. So I just want to explain the HASPRA service area, as Director Wosby was mentioning, is shown on Schedule A. That is actually the boundaries uh that are written in the written agreement that's in the packet. Basically, the city of Hayward's uh corporation limits, that's why it extends all the way south. But HASPRA itself is an amalgamation of the trustee agencies that sign on. And that's what's shown in Schedule B. So that's actually the jurisdictions of all of our agencies, and right now we're showing all five. So that includes both counties, because the park district is a two-county agency, down to the smaller organizational elements like Oraloma or um mosquito abatement, of course, is countywide. So that, Schedule B map was the map that was intended to be in the packet, I just wanted to clarify. So in terms of the next steps, here's a, a diagram. Today, we are going to have a vote. And that will allow the prospective trustee agencies, who are here on the board, and the prospective trustee agencies, to each take that document to their boards. And here's the current schedule, April sixteenth, Tuesday, at Oraloma, followed by Hard here, uh, May sixth. May eighth, it sounds like, Alameda County Abatement. And it looks like the twentieth for city of Hayward Council meeting, May what?
Twenty first.
Oh, May twenty first, excuse me, May twenty first, City Hayward Council Meeting. And we're on the schedule for June fourth at the Park District Board. So at the end of that process, we'll know who is it on the HASPRA um in twenty twenty four. So I'll leave it at that and see if there's any questions for myself or Nicole.
No, that's great.
All right, just thank you for getting this document together and that thanks through the technical advisory staff and all the people that did the hard work and Nicole and Jason Rosenberg, thank you so much for putting up with us. And I I look forward to this. I I think there's a lot of compromises, but I think we're gonna go in a gray area. And it's not an opportunity, I hope we're gonna talk about this afternoon after, well, I'm gonna talk about the grant that we just got. Uh and and I look forward to this, and the only thing I would add was, and it's out of place, I know, but you showed the big map. We also, Hayward Shoreline includes part of the San Francisco Bay, so why don't we have the Regional Water Quality Control Board or invite them anyway for their input? And the Army Corps of Engineers, which a very smart man once told me, in all seriousness, he was a state legislator, Bill Cork, said, you know, you're not gonna get, you're not gonna get people giving you too much grants for here, or you're not gonna get the state to pay for this because the nine Bay Area counties are the most, the nine of the richest Bay Area counties, or nine of the richest counties in all of California. You're gonna have to get just a whole national deal, a core of engineers of people that can do the job, whether they like to go or not. Uh, you know, do, they do rivers and dams, but they do a hell of a job. So things we're gonna need those folks for technical advisory, if nothing else, and maybe some, some, some of their input from the federal level. But I love it, I think it's great.
You see question on the map?
Yes, could you go back, let me get that back on the screen.
Okay, so the one, the one on the right, uh, HASPRA is the area in dark. And then to the right of it, below it, just Alameda County Mosquito. So once the mosquito joins us, HASPRA will increase in size. Is that, is now?
Well, Nicole, could you explain the difference between the agency boundaries and the service area?
Sure. So because you are a agency that's made up of a number of member agencies, technically, your jurisdiction is the full area of all of the member agencies' own jurisdictions. But the idea here is that HASPRA won't be, or likely won't be engaging in any work all the way out in Dublin. Instead, they're focused here on the Hayward Shoreline. And so this map, the HASPRA service area map that's attached to Schedule A, that's the map that you all have been using and functioning under. And we just wanted to kind of show these two concepts so that it's clear. The service area is where you all will be performing your work relative to HASPRA. The whole jurisdiction of Schedule B is, for example, if at some point it was appropriate for HASPRA to hold a board meeting somewhere within the jurisdiction, that would be anywhere within the full jurisdiction of the member agencies. Not necessarily just limited to the Hayward, uh, the HASPRA service area.
So the Alameda County Mosquito Abatement District would not be uh joined by HASPRA?
It wouldn't, it wouldn't expand the service area. It would just expand the jurisdiction of HASPRA, the sort of Schedule B.
Very good, okay. And and we expect mosquito to join us, right?
Yeah.
Thank you, Nicole, very much. And and Nicole, thanks, before you leave us, I, we really appreciate the work that you've done on on this. It's been a, a long battle, a year and a half, and I and and I did all my colleagues, uh, Wosby's comments about there's something very, very, very important for all of us, our residents. On the protection of our shoreline, whether we will be able to do it or not, that's something that we can study and and follow along. But I think it's something that's tremendous. It's a big step that we're taking today. I think certainly is. And it'll, and what I like about it, it opens it up for other folks to come and join us. And that's something that are very important. Amanda, are there any uh public comments on this?
There are no hands raised currently.
Okay, everybody here? No, no? Okay, with that being done, I don't think we have any more comments on it, and we'll need a motion.
So move, move.
I'll say it.
All right, and we'll do roll call then, please.
Yes, trustee Andrade.
Yes.
Trustee Wosby.
Yes.
Chair Zermin.
See.
Motion passes.
That's excellent. Big sector, very, very important meeting. Maria, make sure you tell supervisor Liza Marquez that we are on and that we expect her soon in our meeting. And you sit along with us, Maria.
And I might add, if I can add, thank uh the supervisor for all the work she did, when she was a member of this, because she was very instrumental in with her knowledge of making this work.
So absolute thanks to her, yeah.
Well, listen.
All right. Did you get that, Maria? All right, let's see. Let's see.
She has her hand raised. I'll, I'll go ahead and allow her to talk, if that's okay? Maria does? Yes.
All right, let's see. I believe now we have old business.
She's coming up.
Oh, I'm sorry, Maria.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, hello, thank you. Yes, we are watching and we are excited. Thank you for having us and um, we're definitely looking to uh be an active participant in this, so thank you again.
Thank you very much, Maria. Okay, good. Choose to work for supervisor supervisor. Over to Tracy. Uh, we now are in item five, which is old business. Devon?
Yes, this is um a regular part of the agenda. Basically, we've just described it with the memo that I've included, which will be a place where we can talk about recruitment efforts that may or may not uh ready for, well, that would be recruitment efforts that are ready for public disclosure. And um any upcoming engagement activities, like you mentioned, street fairs and um various festivals that we can participate in. So we've kind of gone over it now, uh, for this time, but we'll continue this on the agenda for the future.
We want to see this every, at every meeting.
Okay, we can do that.
I think that's very, very important. You see progress, et cetera.
Sure.
All right. And maybe who are contacted, so if I ever run into John Miller, hey, John, how's it going? Have you had a talk? For the contact.
Okay.
All right, um, any? Any public comments on that particular item, Amanda? Recruitment efforts for additional trustee agencies?
I don't see any.
Very good. All right, then we now go to item five B, community engagement activities. Which one's the same?
Same.
All right. But I'm glad that they're separate.
Okay.
Yeah, that's good. Keep them separate. Okay, activities are different than the efforts of recruitment. Okay, so now we go to item six, which is new business. Are there any updates? And Devin?
This is a placeholder item for future agendas. Where any trustee agency who wants to give an update about capital projects or grants received could mention it in a public setting. In some cases, it won't be, but other times, it would be appropriate.
Is it appropriate to talk about the grant?
I think if we don't mention, if we don't mention where the grant is coming from, then go ahead.
Oh.
Oh, we can't say where it's coming from?
It hasn't really been announced publicly.
Okay, there is an opportunity that we should discuss. Yeah, HASPA is going to get, and I find it fascinating, I wish I could say the names, because it's a big federal agency. And it's a pass-through that goes right down to a small agency in the San Francisco Bay Area, which, you know, they have all, these people have tons of money. And they get it, and they go, what are we doing? And how do we do it? And, you know, they want to spend it efficiently and in a good way. So they look, so it's gone from a federal agency to a San Francisco Bay agency, and now it's going to another agency, which is going to give it to HASPA because, one reason. HASPA's got a, something to give it to. I mean, all the other agencies, oh yeah, we're concerned about sea level rise, so give us a grant. And then the agency say, do you have a master plan like we have? We've got, we've got, by shore, right? But no, it's the name. We can do the Hayward Marsh, we can do all kinds of stuff. We've got projects listed and ready to go. So these things, in my opinion, are gonna start to flow. I wish we did announce it. I know it would come to fruition, but let them announce it. And I, but I would hope that we can leverage this as an opportunity to invite that group that gave it to us, cut some ribbons, take some pictures, and get some publicity, so that other people would look to join us.
Yeah, it's very exciting for HASPA.
And that reminds me that I think it'd be good idea for the agendas to have a different item on grants.
Okay.
Because this is one grant, did we pursue it? Did we go after it? Or we just continue it? All right, okay. So how many more, how many more grants are there? And I'm sure you guys are gonna keep looking for it. It'd be real nice to find that or know what grants are out there and what we're pursuing, and how many we can share with HARD, with the city, et cetera. So, we will get, so enter the report, that's good news. When, do we know when it will be?
I think in the next few weeks, it'll be announced publicly.
Okay. And we're gonna invite Biden to come over and, you know. Yeah.
To announce it. It is a three-year grant. It's, it's, the HASPA portion of it is about half a million dollars. And it will enable us to both study how to expand HASPA as we've been trying to do, but also how to prioritize implementing the master plan projects.
Absolutely.
So it will give some teeth to the work that was already done in the master plan. But it's looking at viability and funding and what other agencies are doing around the bay as well.
Right, right. And the master plan was done by all you guys before I got here, so, so thank you. And Alyssa, of course. Yeah, so. And now.
That's right, Almena.
All right, I'll try, Almena. So, ABBA, no, ABBA shouldn't have been a part of HASPA, would they? ABBA? ABBA? East Bay, East Bay. It's a, it's a new name. Or Spanish pronunciation. How would they be interested?
Not sure they would, yeah. I think they're, you know, much really focused on electricity.
Yeah, well, they want to be green, we want to be green also. Okay, all right. We are now on item numbers. Amanda, do we have any public comments on item number six, new business?
Not looking like it currently.
I'll add one thing. Oh, yes, please. So just in the past, I just, we, it's been expressed interest in kind of expanding the kind of programming at the shoreline, et cetera. Both at the board level and with our general manager. And there's serious active discussion about with other new partners to possibly do that. It's very much really at the heart and soul, certainly, our general manager, to keep this moving. Yes, it just, it's really has, and we, the board recognizes that it really has a unique position on everything that we look at. And that is, that is the strong pitch. So nothing specific to report, but that the intent that we're continuing that effort.
Well, that checks on me now. I'm glad that Jim does want to pursue that. I think that's very, very important. I mean, kids go out there, schools go out there, and they love it.
But we can.
Yes.
So I, it's a huge opportunity. And honestly, I think it links with this because, you know, as was mentioned by Director Loski, that we point to the master plan when people are saying this. Well, we're also gonna have, we have a facility that we can point to as, you know, this is the center of all the, this will be the hub, this will be the activity, it will be something physical everyone can point to. And it'll, I think it'll resonate.
Right. Of course, one thing with a lot, some of the, you know, some of the beaches, there's still some rain, some tires out there on the beach.
You can show us how to do it.
Yeah, my wife says, why is there a tire out there? Somebody drove their car there.
It's actually a lot cleaner than it used to be.
Yes, I know, it is clean, yeah. And then there's little, there're little bags full of.
There's plastic.
But you don't see that, you know.
No, nasty horse.
The tires could probably all say.
Yeah. Thank you for that.
Yes, can I riff on that? Right, excellent idea. I mean, God, that's, think about it, your interpreters can always just have a preamble that this, this area is being protected by HASPA. Here's what HASPA does. You know, not a big, long deal, just part of the deal. Maybe like a Native American acknowledgement. I know it's different, but it is, it's, we acknowledge our Native American heritage here. And here's a way now, we're trying to preserve it. And hopefully, we can get some Native American folks in this group. Give us a little juice. But also, East Bay Regional Lifeguard, I mean, lifeguards, interpreters who work down on Hayward Shoreline and have people out here. I'm thinking, yeah, we can get HASPA to do all kinds of stuff. So I'm thinking that with this grant, when we get this grant, we may not get Joe Biden. But, you know, I remember Liz Ortega has come to the shoreline with us, Oyster Bay, with the East Bay Regional lifeguard. Loves it, embraced it, it's supported a bill to, or a bill has supported getting some, what do you call those things now? Sendbacks, givebacks, not called pork anymore. Who's that called?
Appropriation.
Appropriate, yeah.
That's, that's dirty money.
No, no, it's good money. And Aisha Waha, when we visited her, said, oh yeah, I run on the Hayward Shoreline all the time. So she's familiar, Eric Swallow came to the Hayward Shoreline based on the fact he used to run here, supposedly every day, he told us. So we could, we could really, when we get the grant, we ought to have some, can't get Joe Biden. I think we could get some of these folks to be part of it, and I think it'd be great. And somebody mentioned cleanup. Gosh, HASPA should be sponsoring Earth Day. We should have Earth Day cleanup on the Hayward Shoreline with our group and anybody we can get, and also coastal cleanup.
Absolutely.
Lots of opportunities.
Yeah, there's not the best scout when it costs a cleanup, but they, and then with these elected folks, each one of them is a grant opportunity. Each one of them. Now, and that's three, right? And then we'll include Supervisor Marquez, another possible. There's so many now, you know. I like working with this.
Can I make it happen?
That's good.
Yeah.
That's right, there's another one. Okay, so each one of those names is a grant. All right, let's see. So that means we are now on to board member announcements. No, okay.
The Regional Park District is celebrating their ninetieth anniversary, and we're celebrating it this Saturday at Ardenwood Farm, historic farm, with a sheep shearing event. I've never, I've never.
Sheared a sheep?
You can go out and watch it. And I don't know how we're gonna incorporate that into our ninetieth birthday. It's gonna be good. And May eleventh, we are all invited to Lake Shmo Park. We're having our signature, our park fest, we're calling it our, our, our big event. Is for our ninetieth anniversary is at Lake Shmo. You're all invited to come. There'll be lots of entertainment, fun, and interpretation of nature and then interpretation of having a great time.
Yeah, and cocktail hour too.
Keep this, keep, oh, I'm on the hard foundation. One of the key things is we have a foundation at the Regional Park District. We're still on our way. So we have, when we pick people for foundation members, we pick pillars of the community, people are very active, people who want to, you know, forward the ideas of the Park District. Fortunately, we have John Martin from Drake's Brewery on our foundation. Drake's Brewery will be at the event, and he's sponsoring it.
Didn't they give beer at the Peace, one of the, they did that at one of the events that you guys have, you know? And beer event, and the Spiritual Parks District.
Oh, yes, there will be. I mean, I'm not, we're not suggesting that's the feature, there'll be lots of fun things. But there, it's a family-friendly event. There's bands and things like that, but it will be, you know, and people like to support the Park District. John Martin from Drake's Brewery is a wonderful guy who supports us in many, many different ways. But one way he can support us on that day is to provide some beer. It's, you can't have a hundred. There'll be, we'll control it, and it'll be a fun family event. But yeah, they even named the beer after our partner. Well, it was Kickback Ale. And it was a dime for every can of the Regional Park.
I have three things. So another possible agency or business is Pepsi-Cola.
Oh, yeah.
Pepsi-Cola and Chasta. They're biggest users.
Right here.
Yeah, they're right here. They were based in the Pepsi-Cola plant. I think it's the largest in Western Mississippi. Um, we talk, we keep talking about the interpretive center. Wouldn't it be nice if we started my announcement, it'd be nice if we had some kind of a public art out there. You know, the Alonies apparently were here. They had these canoes. Maybe we could come up, somebody come up with a canoe and put it out there as public art. Maybe there's something else. I don't know. They probably didn't have totem poles. I'm thinking the one that used to be at Weeks Park.
Excellent.
But maybe there's something else that could represent the Alonies out there at the marches.
So you're suggesting that we get some, an artist to do a big welcome sign with new eyes?
No, you didn't say that.
And that's not worth it. Like something, something.
But if you're not the president, then not say those words.
Oh, my God. Maybe, that's just an idea. Maybe there's some other entity or art that we can do out there.
Yeah, definitely one of County Hills, and you can make them. It's an interpretive adventure for kids. Have kids come on the weekends, build, pick up, you know, collect reeds, learn how to tie rope. Learn how to make, and then you've done three or four of those.
Yeah, all right. And if you notice, President Rosman has a nice Hayward on heart shirt. He's got a nice East Bay shirt. And I don't have a HASPA pin. Do you have a HASPA? Yeah, so I spent fifty bucks on some more HASPA pins, so I can, I brought the virgin butter lupa today, so we could work well, and we did work well, so. So she blessed us. So those are my three particular items. And then, of course, I did announce already the other possible activities where we could participate. Let's see. Amanda, any, anyone interested in doing a public comment on this?
No.
No? Okay, all right. We are now on to item number eight, which is agenda setting for next meeting. Devin?
So I just wanted to note that the board reserved May ninth for a special meeting, in case we needed it. And the question to the board is, do you want to keep that meeting? If yes, then what are some of the suggested agenda items? Staff doesn't have anything. The next regular scheduled meeting is July eleventh.
The only thing that I could see is grant monies, possible grants, consultants, if we're thinking about a consultant. So, and a report on what we're doing as far as recruiting. Do we need a special meeting? I don't think we do.
It's a scheduled meeting, not always May ninth is a special.
It's a special meeting.
I see, I mean, it would be an opportunity to, I love the idea of going to all these events, but we need to put some names in there and get some commitments from folks, schedule these events. We also need to, I don't know, is every, one here has seen, yeah, probably everyone here has seen the traveling roadshow of HASPA. The great graphics, the newspaper, the great interpretation that Francis Ford does, and Devin has done, and Eddie's done. Well, Peter and I just watch you guys and, ah. So, I mean, I don't know. But, you know, maybe give us some, it'd be great house materials. I'd like to be able to, I'd like to go out and talk to some city councils and some brewery folks and talk about HASPA. We need to plan that, and I, I don't know that.
So.
It needs to be, I don't need.
There's no meeting in June.
Correct.
All right, that's what we made it. So we can probably support the maintenance of this.
Okay.
You have a long task to do.
Yes, okay.
But you have some help.
Yes.
Tyler is more than willing to help you. And they're, and they're gonna be, you're my help from the ground up.
Okay, so confirming that we will have a May ninth HASPA meeting. It will be at three o'clock. A location will be determined.
Can we meet here? Mr. President?
Sure. Uh, let me, one moment.
Okay, I'm looking into it.
I'm looking what I have scheduled here, but.
Well, we'll get back to it.
We had you tentatively. I think we had tentatively reserved it, so.
Oh, is that right?
There, I have on my schedule here, it says HASPA special meeting, three AM on May ninth here.
Fantastic. Okay, then it'll be three o'clock here, another high-up meeting.
Are we ever interested in meeting at the, in the city of Hayward, at City Hall?
Absolutely.
Room two A?
We can do that.
Yeah, July, whatever.
Check and see, oh, well, yeah, we'll have to make sure it's available. Our staff's available.
So we met at Orlona, we met at the Interpretive Center, Mosquito Abatement. That comes to Abatement, so.
All right.
Excellent. You know, we also have Eaton Mansion somewhere, and I don't know. That's where the foundation offices.
Very nice place.
They have a room that's about half the size, as well, maybe a little bigger, but, you know, for me, you know, we're upstairs.
But they're all downstairs.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's one downstairs, and there's a prime from upstairs. Oh, I didn't, I haven't seen the one upstairs.
Yeah, one upstairs is all.
All right. All right. Amanda, do we have any, any public comments on agenda setting for next meeting?
No, there are not.
Okay, all right. Devin, anything else? No, no, we have, it's not an actual item, so it's nothing. So I believe that we adjourn this meeting at three fifty-five. And our next meeting is May ninth, at twenty twenty-four, three AM. Thank you all very much.
Thanks, Nancy, getting home. Thank you, Amanda.
This is very productive.